We have a quorum, so calling the meeting in order.
Thank you.
Order and are there any requests to?
We need to call the roll. We have to call the roll.
Okay.
So.
Calling the roll.
What am I rolling for?
Here.
Start the meeting to establish quorum.
Oh, to see who's here. Alright, so we have trustee Jamal.
Here.
He right.
Here.
Trustee Milchker.
Here.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Here.
And trustee Prendergast all present. That is a quorum.
And trustee Jay.
I have trustee Jay.
Oh, I see. That's the phone number that doesn't have a name. Okay.
No.
Okay. So then Chancellor Burke will read a welcome statement and turn the meeting over to me.
Ready?
Yeah.
Good evening. This is our first Zoom board meeting. We ask for your patience as we navigate this platform. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video call has been muted with the exception of trustees TJ Prendergast, Tim Jamal, James Wright, David Lang, Barbara J., Marsha Milchker, and Teri Whit Riddell. Later in the meeting, we will provide instructions to both Zoom video call attendees wishing to provide public comment on items not on the agenda or items on the agenda to the board.
Okay, so with that, do we have any public comments submitted?
No, we do not.
None submitted by email or in person. Okay. So with that, we will call for a motion to recess to close session.
So move.
So.
Second.
I have a motion from trustee Jamal, a second from trustee Wright. Hearing no objection, we will now leave this Zoom and go to the closed session Zoom.
Mention the Emeritus classes at Saddleback College, which are almost all have almost all moved online. And our Emeritus population, particularly like in Laguna Woods, it has 20,000 people living there. And these people, all the clubhouse has been closed down in Laguna Woods. And they're really older people confined to their homes. To be able to now have these classes online, to be able to give offer them instruction and human contact and some satisfaction and some even fun to them now is just really incredible to do this. And I feel so good about this and so wonderful that we're offering this to all of our students and and our Emeritus students who really need it because they're very much homebound now. And it really makes a difference to them for their lives. I also want to say that I've been studying the COVID virus because I'm a research biologist and also studying how as leaders, we can really do the best job that we can to help all of our faculty and classified staff and administrators do the best job in working with our students now. And a lot of questions have come up. For instance, are transcripts from now on going to have an asterisk on them for the year 2020? Because this is an unprecedented year and these students are all going online. Some people have said we should offer all our classes pass fail, but then things like medical schools don't accept pass fail classes. So many questions, and yet these are questions for the academic Senate to ask and not the Board of Trustees, but we have to be thinking about them.
Actually, Marsha, that brings up a good point because we just had this discussion in my district that we are establishing that grades, the grades they had going into this are a floor. And that we don't want to try and have anyone go below that. Is that something that we've had a discussion with the faculty at all?
Good question.
Well, the reason why, so keep in mind that grading is the purview of the faculty. And both academic Senate have taken leadership roles in helping to guide faculty in some of these scenarios. We're trying to keep the academic Senate as updated as possible as news and the Faculty Association, as news comes down from places like the BRN for the nursing program or other or the Chancellor's offices, Chancellor's Office advisements that we receive. We're making sure the academic Senate get all of that information.
Trustee Wright, I believe, another question.
Yes, I would just wanted to thank again to everyone who's done such a great job in getting these courses online because I know what it's like to have to do something like this. And in particular, in the sciences and the other areas where they have labs. It's pretty hard to put those labs online. But I know they've really gone into work during the week last week and going into the labs and doing videos so that they can use those videos to help them do what they would do in a normal laboratory experience. Because it's important, particularly in the sciences and other areas that you have labs and that you do, you do things to help those labs. That's part, that's part of our.
Anyway, if I could just respond to a couple of the other comments, I think there are lots of questions that we're going to have to answer and sit down and think about. But a lot of that is also going to depend on what the State Chancellor's Office does, what our creditors do. We're waiting to hear, for instance, what the Board of Nursing is going to do in terms of our clinical requirements. We have students in health sciences, students in early learning that are also going to need exemptions so that they don't end up with an asterisk on their transcript and impact their completion. So lots of things to yet be determined down the road.
Thank you. And, and are, does there any more questions on the report?
No, this is trustee Jay. I just wanted to thank everybody for doing such a marvelous job. Everybody.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm muted.
No, you're, you're on.
Are we?
Everyone.
May I?
So. May I ask just or make a comment? The next time, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but we as trustees, I think all of us agree that the faculty have done a phenomenal job and all the ITs and online assistance that they've given all the faculty. And especially what Cindy had shared that they were a team and that's what we want. I see them as the pillars of all of them, you know, for our college. And maybe when the chancellor or someone sends out a mass notice to the faculty, could you share that the trustees are extremely proud of the faculty that we have? I don't know if that's appropriate, but I sure wish I could tell each one of them.
Yeah.
How thankful we are.
Yeah, and I also want to, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I, I think the faculty have done an incredible outstanding job and we really, really thank them. The part-time and full-time, I also want to thank all the classified staff that have stayed in there cleaning the buildings and doing everything we need to keep our classes going. They've just been incredible. And the administrators have been there making sure everything's running smoothly. So I just think we really, really have to thank everyone and we have to say to each other because people, our species of animals do not like to be isolated. So we need to have social interaction. So these classes are offering social interaction and we have to help each other go through these times. And I think we are, as President Stern says, this is saddleback. And I'm sure President Viscachill says, this is IBC and we all are here to help each other. This is the South Orange County Community College District and we all are here to be kind to each other and help each other and, and make it through these times and then, then we'll be fine. So thanks, thanks to everyone.
I can unmute, but I know June McLaughlin had a comment.
Okay.
I just want to thank the trustees for raising the issue about grading. And I think it's a very important issue that the Senate needs to consider regarding what we do with the remainder of the semester. That's all I, the Senate will, and of course, I want to thank everybody for their support. And it's been an amazing coming together demonstration of leadership. And the faculty feel very supported and I plan to communicate to IBC faculty, the board's support and the comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To Cindy or Elliot, you guys still unmuted?
I'm unmuted. I think Elliot might be muted.
So I just, I guess I'm just wondering, do either of our health centers have we, have any masks that might be available that could be put into use?
So I can speak for Irvine Valley College. We ran out of masks last week. And we're working with local officials to see if any additional masks can be obtained. But as you all know, all of those masks priorities being given to hospitals and healthcare workers. And since our two centers are shut down at the moment and not seeing patients, I think that it's unlikely that we'll be getting a new shipment at IBC for some time.
We also have a minimal supply for the people. We're still, we still have a nurse on duty in the clinic in case any employees need any help, trustee Jamal. So we do have to keep enough masks for that. But we were not able to get the large supply that we had hoped to get, so we really don't have a lot to donate. And I will say we're, we're working with Vice Chancellor Gable to see if we can donate some cleaning supplies and materials that we have in, in health science programs. There are some local resource areas that are helping us give those to healthcare entities that need them. But it's difficult because those are purchased with public funds. So we're trying to find a creative way where we might be able to help that transfer be effectuated.
Yeah, I think I heard trustee Uriarte's mic working.
Yes, good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for making this meeting possible. As a student for Saddleback College, I would like to share my perspective and I would like to thank all the administrators and professors that have the proper training to adjust in these moments of challenging moments or classes into the online format. I have to proudly say that my classes have not been interrupted. I am a 100% online student. And my courses follow the same regular, you know, educational path. And I appreciate about the quick responses of my professors that have many students to just have flexibility into the due dates. And many of my professors have opened up the following week courses or homeworks to try to complete the assignments in a timely manner and also before the end of the semester. So I applaud the quick responses of the professors, the faculty members. I'm also a full-time student for other community college out of the South Orange County Community College District. And on those on-campus classes, unfortunately, we have been hold back for at least 10 days missing classes and, you know, putting a hole on our educational path. So thank you very much, Saddleback College, you know, faculty members and the South Orange County Community College District for the quick response in favor and contingency of our educational goals.
Okay. Anybody else on this report? Okay, I would like to go back. Trustee Uriarte, I don't know if you were on when I asked if you had a board report. Yeah, there you go.
I just did.
Yes, thank you very much. I do not have a board report since I have not been attending to the previous activities for the month. Thanks.
Thank you. So now we move on to consent calendar items. Oh, thank you very much, President Stern, President, actually President Viscachill. Presentation. We'll go ahead and move on to five-point. Do I have any polls in the, in the consent?
The district would like to poll 5.5.
Good. Okay. I have trustee Jay, I have 5.3 and 5.8.
5.3 and 5.8 trustee Jay, okay. Anyone else?
Any other?
For the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll move to a bit.
A second.
Trustee Wright.
Are you going to do the resolution separately?
Which one is that?
5.2. 5.2. There are five resolutions.
Yes. Alright, so with that, the balance of the consent calendar, trustee Jamal. Motion, trustee Wright, second. How are we doing the voting?
It's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be a motion and a second and then a roll call.
Okay, so we have that. So we'll go ahead and do the.
Grace will call the names for you.
Grace will call them.
Yeah. Okay, trustee Jay.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Uriarte.
Yes, aye.
Okay. Alright, so I'll save 5.2 to the end. We'll do 5.3 first, trustee Jay.
I was just wondering if they're eliminating the yoga teaching, teacher training and the current cosmetician occupational skills award. Are those being eliminated?
That's Dr. Stern.
So Dr. Stern, I have unmuted you.
Okay, and I'm going to ask Vice President Vokomoto if she's on board to be able to answer the question.
You are now unmuted.
Hi, good evening, trustees. We are not getting rid of those programs. We're just updating the awards that we're providing. And so the programs both still exist.
The programs will continue then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then we'll entertain a motion and a second to pass 5.3.
Move approval?
No.
Second.
Milchker, motion, a second. We have no discussion. Go and vote on the item. Grace, roll call please.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Uriarte.
Aye.
Okay, next we'll do 5.5 pulled by the district.
5.5 is being pulled by the district because we will not be having any more speakers, guest speakers. So there's no need to approve the item.
It's being removed. Okay, 5.8.
Okay, my question was on the stadium. They're asking 83,000 more dollars to be added to the contract. I just wanted to know a little bit more about the stadium and what that was for.
So this is Vice Chancellor Gable. The change order is really to compensate for additional soil preparation that was needed in parking lot 1A in accordance with the geotechnical engineers' guidelines. And part of that, within that, we are getting a credit for a modified base at parking lots 1A and 1B. And the other piece of that change order was to terminate the copper lines for the fax line at the Child Development Center that, that was a request after the plans had already been done. Thank you very much.
A second.
TJ had a question.
Oh, okay, hold on. I have a motion from trustee Lang. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second from trustee Milchker. Go ahead and trustee Jamal.
So Anne Marie, not just on this project, but while we're on it, the impact of COVID-19 on construction on the stadium itself. What do you think, what kind of impact is it going to have, if any? The timing.
Hopefully it won't have any. Construction workers are considered critical functions in both the federal government and the state guidelines for public entities. So we have sent a letter out to all of our contracts reiterating that. It is up to the individual business themselves to make that decision. But as far as we're concerned, they can be here and they have been here working. They did originally PCL, which is the stadium contractor. Last week, when Orange County came out with their first directive, they sent us a letter saying that they weren't going to work. But then the very next day, when the Orange County Department of Health changed their order, they did show up to work. They had to leave early that day, unfortunately on Thursday because of the rain. But right now, we're just moving forward with all of our contractors as is, and they are continuing to work.
So all, all, I mean, all, even though we're under shelter in place across the state, all contractors are deemed essential that are working for public agencies?
It's actually pretty much a reconstruction project. My, my sister-in-law is a project engineer on the Rams Charger Stadium and their construction is normal. They just have to practice social distancing onsite.
Right, that's the other question though, by social distancing when they're on site.
Correct. So that was included in our memo to our contractors as well, that we recommend that they heed the advice to social distance. But again, that is all the contractor's responsibility since it is their employees and basically it's their work site while it's under construction.
Any other questions?
I went and looked at the stadium. It was last week and there were so many workers out there. I couldn't believe it. I've never seen so many workers on the stadium. I go out and look at the stadium about once, once a week or once every two weeks. And I was shocked to see so many workers out there working on the stadium. It was, it made me feel good.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, Grace, roll call please.
Trustee Jay.
Uh, yeah.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Trustee, student trustee Uriarte.
Aye.
Alright, so next we have 5.2, the resolution. Are we reading out a summary?
Yeah. They did? I thought that was the one they just did.
They did 5.8.
Oh, they did 5.8. Oh, so we need to do 5.10.
Okay.
The meeting managed move, move approval? I don't, where am I?
5.10 was passed as a balance. Do we need to pull it now?
Yeah, I thought.
Never mind, never mind. We're good. Back to 5.2. Trustee Prendergast, would you like me to pull up the verbiage of the resolution and share that on the screen?
Yes, please.
Okay, which, are you going backwards first?
We're doing all five resolutions?
I, yeah, I have them too. Do you want me to read the summaries or trustee Wright?
That's up to trustee Wright, I guess, if you want to read them or not.
Trustee Wright?
Yes, I can do it.
Would you like to read the summary?
Of all five?
Or would you like me to?
Uh, you can go, why don't you go ahead and do it?
Okay.
Your voice is really good.
Resolution 20-08, declaring a state of emergency and delegating authority to the chancellor to close centers, campuses and offices and to otherwise respond to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 if necessary. Given the severity of COVID-19, this resolution would permit the chancellor to close district or college facilities if necessary and also declare a state of emergency in the district to gain access to federal emergency or disaster-related funding if available. The resolution also addresses vital operational needs of the districts and colleges without the need to convene the board for approval. Resolution two, you want me to do all of them together or do you want to vote on each one?
I think we need to vote on each one individually.
Okay.
I have one that I was supposed to sign and mail back. That's the old version. It's a new one on its way.
It's a brand new one.
So we did add a couple of things based on the fact that the governor did a safer at home resolution. And that required us to identify employees that the board and the district CEO approved to be on campus during this period of time. The intention would not be for all of these people to be here every day, but only as needed in order to maintain our offerings and support services to our students.
Right. But I'm saying, I got one that I'm supposed to send and mail back, so obviously I'm waiting for the new one.
Grace says yes.
Okay. So, roll call please.
And we're going to.
You need a motion and a second.
I moved approve resolution one, declaration of state of.
This is Terry, second.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Uriarte.
Aye.
The second resolution is in recognition of April as Community College Awareness Month. This resolution is in support of the nationally recognized Community College Awareness Month celebrated in the month of April to bring attention to the great work offerings and programs of the community colleges within the South Orange County Community College District. This resolution joins several other local resolutions passed by local city councils and municipalities who recognize the great impact of both Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College.
Okay.
Sorry.
Motion, second please.
That's Terry.
Yeah, roll call.
I didn't hear a second.
Aye, there are most, Terry seconded, Terry said.
Who motion?
So move.
Who motion?
I thought trustee Jay motioned.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
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 Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Uriarte.
Aye.
Three, our resolution in. Three, our resolution in recognition of April 22, 2020 as Earth Day. Across the world, Earth Day is recognized on April 22 of each year. To reinforce the district's commitment to protecting our environment, the resolution displays a strong statement of support for continued efforts in the areas of renewable energy and sustainability.
Okay, motion and a second.
Aye, I move.
Trustee Wright.
I second it.
Trustee J, second. We have the echo.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Wright Dell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udiyakse.
Aye.
Resolution number four, in recognition of April 24, 2020, as the day of remembrance for the Armenian genocide. This resolution supports the reaffirmation that April 24 of each year is designated as the day of remembrance for the Armenian genocide of 1915 to 1923, and that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District encourages the colleges and all employees and students to commemorate this historic tragedy.
Okay.
So move.
There's the correction, at least on my page. I don't know how the resolution looks, but from 1915, not to 2923, but 1923.
Oh, yeah. You're right.
Correct.
Oh, wow. So I have a motion from trustee Jamal.
Second.
Second from trustee Whit Wright Dell.
As corrected.
As corrected.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Wright Dell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udiyakse.
Aye.
Resolution, the fifth resolution, resolution in recognition of April 29, 2020, as Denim Day. The resolution recognizes Denim Day, which draws attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault remain serious issues in our society. Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day are also intended as a means of calling attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and the reality that many in today's society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and forcible rape.
Okay, motion? Motion from trustee Jamal?
Aye.
No, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Wright Dell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udiyakse.
Aye.
Okay, so I think that is all of the consent calendar. Moving on to 6.1. Director's election.
So, trustee Prendergast?
Yes.
So my understanding is that we are to move a slate of nine candidates, is that correct?
Well, up to nine.
But I think in the past, I think Kathleen, correct me if I'm wrong, it's encouraged that if you're going to do a slate, that you do nine, is that correct?
You can do fewer, but if you're looking, have someone running.
So my.
And you want other people to vote.
Right, we want to get other votes. I was just saying that I don't know everyone on this list, but one of the things I think we may want to consider is those trustees from Southern California first, just as a thought. And I counted one, two, three, four, five, six, seven from Southern California. Yeah.
I would also, I would also throw in there Larry Kennedy Ventura.
Okay, I had him, I included him in SoCal.
You counted him as SoCal.
So I had Andra, I don't know her, Or, Andra Hoff.
Andra Hoffman.
From LA, Barbara Dunzheath, North Orange, Barbara Jean Calhoun, Compton, some guy named T., Thomas J. Prender something, South Orange, Marissa Perez Cerritos, Larry Kennedy Ventura, and is it Barry Snell, Santa Monica.
Throw in Barbara Calhoun from Compton.
I had.
He has her.
I mentioned Barbara Calhoun, TJ.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
If I could suggest Pam Haynes from Los Rios, she's also on the Board of Governors.
Fine with me.
Who's the other person I met at the conference? Lauren Steck, Monterey. That would be nine.
I agree.
Sounds good.
Trustee Prendergast, do you see the tat?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was reading my iPad for the name. Trustee Lynn would like to speak.
Yes, so I was going to suggest that, well, I had plans to basically vote for one trustee, and that was number eight on my list, you know, with the idea that I'd love to get somebody from our board on, and I'm wondering if that's the best way to do so.
I think the suggestion in the past has been when we have somebody on there as a sign of appeasement, I guess, that if we nominate nine, then we're most likely that those nine would appreciate that and recommend that I get voted. If we just vote for me, and I'm one of the earlier districts that is voting, that might send a signal.
Yeah, I don't think that'll be well-received if we did that. I don't think that'll help your.
But I do appreciate the consideration, trustee Lynn.
All right, so since I, I guess I was the maker of the motion, I'm, in addition to seven I mentioned, I'm okay with adding, Kathleen, did you say Pam Haynes?
Pam Haynes.
And then TJ mentioned Lauren Steck.
Correct.
So I think that brings us to nine. So I make that motion.
I second it.
Any further discussion? We'll go ahead and vote on the item. Grace?
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Wright Dell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udiyakse.
Aye.
6.2, Maring de Marco Award nomination.
And I was supposed to do something there that I failed to do in light of everything else that's been going on. The board had recommended an individual last year who works in our custodial services at IBC, and I recommended that the board consider up sending that individual's name in for the de Marco Award again this year.
Well, but don't we still have time if we delegate to you to do that? Can't we still do that, or do we need to?
Deadline is April the 3rd.
So Kathleen, if the deadline is April the 3rd, can we just submit, can we just name that person tonight if we can get the name and then delegate to you or the team to submit the nomination?
Yes, we can. I'm trying to see if I can get the name, so maybe we want to come back to this item.
All right, so 6.3, Board of Governors, Classified Employee of the Year Award.
A move approval? Move approval?
Second.
A motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee J.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Wright Dell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udiyakse.
Aye.
Okay, 6.4, Regional Strong Workforce Program Participation.
Move approval.
Second from trustee J.
Trustee Lynn moved, trustee J seconded.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Wright Dell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udiyakse.
Aye.
Okay, 6.5, reach back. For five buildings.
Don't move.
I second it.
Jamal, trustee Wright.
Yes, where am I here? Oh, no.
Requesting to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast. Trustee Whit Wright Dell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udiyakse.
Aye.
Okay, 6.6, double award. Hazard mitigation grant program.
Don't move.
Who was that?
Second.
I think that was trustee J and trustee Lynn. All right, seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Wright Dell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udiyakse.
Aye.
Okay, 6.7, Board Policy Revision.
Don't move.
Second.
Second it.
From trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright. No request to speak, just to make sure all board members are aware, on our conference call, we were informed, these will be the last board policy revisions for a while.
Thank you.
All right, Glenn, roll call.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Wright Dell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udiyakse.
Aye.
Yeah, 6.8, Act of Public Employment, Classified Administration Personnel Actions. Are there any changes?
Can I say something?
Hold on, let me, let me hear from, Kim, wait a second.
This is trustee Lynn. Are we paying people when the college is closed, additional compensation? I notice quite a few that were being paid in the col, for different, for additional compensation when the college is closed.
Did you want me to talk about 6.8 first, or?
We're on 6.
So there's no changes on 6.8?
Okay.
Wow, let's see if we can.
Trustee J, is your question about 6.8?
Yes, that is correct. We're going to continue to pay the stipend.
The, for people that, I just wanted to know, it's like this, coordinate the art gallery, how very show, it's $2,208, and it's from 323 to 410. Are we still going to pay the?
So the compensation for the art gallery would be to set up the show and to take the show down. So if that show we're going to open today, that work's already been done, because they would have had to contact the artist and collect all of the art. The work has really been done for that as an example. That has actually already occurred, and it would be too late to take the pay away for work that's been done.
Okay.
So the actual part where the show is going is the least amount of work that the gallery director does.
Oh, okay.
Because there's so much work leading up to it, and then there would be more work tearing, taking the show or striking the show afterwards. So I would presume for it to have opened today, that that work would largely have already taken place.
Right, but we can't go see it. Then the other one is Jennifer Porter, assist students in the photography lab from January 18. Do you still pay the $3,312?
I believe we would, because, I mean, half the semester has occurred. I'd have to look at that one specifically. And I think, given the amount of work that faculty are doing to support moving everything online, I think we need to honor the stipends that we committed to this year.
Okay, fine. Thank you. I appreciate that. You guys are doing a great job.
So TJ?
Yeah.
I just wanted to comment on the reorganization that was proposed by Anne Marie of ATEP and facilities, and I think it's an excellent reorganization. I really commend her.
Yes.
Her recommendations. So good job to the district, Anne Marie in particular.
Thank you, Anne Marie. I was very happy to read that. I think it's fair.
Sounds good. All right, so I have a motion and a second. So we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee J.
Second.
Did we already have a motion and a second, Grace?
Um, I didn't get one.
Oh, I'm sorry. People are asking.
I still move.
All right, so we have a.
And I second.
And a second, okay, trustee Whit Riddell and trustee J. Now we can vote.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
If you can let us know if you are a yes or a no for six point eight?
Uh, yes. Uh, aye.
Student trustee Udi Aspe.
Aye.
Okay, six point nine, fact of the conversion to Canvas One.
No move.
Second, second.
Okay.
Trustee J. Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
J.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udi Aspe.
Aye.
All right, six point one zero, classified personnel. Any changes?
No changes.
They still move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee J. Anyone request to speak? And then we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Trustee Udi Aspe.
Aye.
All right, six point one one, on margin, personnel actions, any changes?
No changes. A move, move approval.
Okay.
I second it.
Trustee Milchiker, second from trustee J. No request to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udi Aspe.
Aye.
Okay, six point one two, adjustment to California school employee salary schedule.
Um, move approval.
Motion for trustee Milchiker.
Second.
I second it.
Second from trustee Jamal. No request to speak, we'll vote on the item.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udi Aspe.
Aye.
Okay, six point one three, final action in public session, Saddleback College student discipline approved, student discipline hearing, second day before expulsion.
Move approval.
And a motion from trustee, second from trustee Wright. No request to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udi Aspe.
Aye.
Okay, that's all the actions, uh, seven point one, Saddleback College.
Back to six point two.
TJ?
Yeah.
Back to, excuse me. Back to six point two.
Okay.
The employee's name is Robert Flornoy.
Oh.
We're six point three, Maring de Marco, six point two.
So I have a motion from trustee Lang.
Second.
And then second from trustee Jamal. So we'll go and vote on the item.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Udi Aspe.
Aye.
Power down the show.
Oh, TJ?
Yes.
Can, I just, before we go to the sevens, I just wanted to thank, um, Vice Chancellor Gable for the grant. You know, to write the grants, it's, it's very, it's time consuming. I just wanted to acknowledge her efforts and her time for the, uh, the hazard mitigation grant. Thank you very much.
I actually cannot take credit for that.
Uh-oh.
Trustee Whit Riddell, that was done by, um, a Saddleback College employee who is no longer with us. Um, and so it's just, we're, we're kind of taking over running that grant, so we have Saddleback College to thank for applying for that grant.
Great. Yeah, okay.
All right. You don't take back the compliment though, right, Terry?
No, I'm just saying she's got a lot on her plate. Now she's writing grants. That's.
I'm kidding.
Yeah, no, I don't take it back.
I agree.
Okay. So Amory, if you can scroll back down the seven.
Yes.
Thank. All right, so Saddleback College, my bad, college speakers, obviously, uh, these are the last ones for a while. Um, seven point two, staff response to public comment. Yeah. Uh, a response to a public comment, February twenty-four.
Let me unmute Dr. Stern.
I don't have a lot to add to what I submitted in writing, um, only a, a brief anecdote, um, and it'll be very brief. Uh, when I was a child, I used to watch Jerry Lewis and Jerry Lewis used to have a routine where he put a plate on his hat, on his head and put chopsticks in his nose and squizzed his eyes real narrowly. Um, and it was very funny and I laughed at it as a child and all adults thought it was really funny. Uh, but our sensibilities changed over time and we didn't realize the impact that that had on Asian Americans and Asians alike. And in the same way, the pejorative depiction of our gaucho was deeply impacting students and employees of Hispanic descent for a long time. Uh, and, and it isn't really the right of us who are not Hispanic to judge whether that impacted appropriately or not. So it's time for that decision to have been made a few years ago to be honored, um, and to work on finding a new depiction for our gaucho so that we can maintain the gaucho and honor South American gachos in a culturally competent way.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next we have Solly Plan Status Report, any questions on that? Okay, seven point four, monthly financial status report.
I just have a, a quick comment.
Go ahead.
TJ, on both seven four and seven five, I think it's important that we try and get some more current financial information to see what the impact of the current crisis are going to be on the finances for the business. And I'd look forward to getting a report on that from, uh, uh, from Anne Marie, whoever the appropriate person is.
I agree, I agree.
I'm sure the trust is taking a beating, Dave.
Yeah, and I can actually give you.
But I'd like to know what that looks like.
Yeah, I can give you the numbers as of today where our trust is, as well as our pension stabilization trust. So our OPEB trust, um, is at a hundred and five point three million, so we've lost about nineteen percent since December thirty-first. And our, um, pension stabilization trust fund is at twenty-four point eight million. And that has lost about seventeen percent since December thirty-first, when we were at twenty-nine point six million. So we have taken a beating in both of, um, both of those accounts.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Uh, now we move on to, uh, reports from the administration of Saddleback College.
Okay, give me one moment, why unmute Dan?
Really?
I heard that.
Mr. Walsh, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much. I will be brief. I and many faculty are exhausted. We basically had to learn how to do, to do a new job in one week. We had to get up to speed on the technology, terminology and techniques of online instructions. I stopped counting the hours I spent on this long ago, but I'm very proud of our faculty and what we've been able to do in such a short amount of time. I am glad the district supported them a couple of years ago in our conversion to Canvas. Also, you brought it up earlier, uh, we've been reiterating the message to faculty to be patient and compassionate with each other and with our students. And I think, um, we'll see in the end that we're all trying to work for the student's success, um, and not going to be penalizing them for what happened. Um, I also need to, sorry, want to acknowledge and thank our heroic faculty in nursing and our EMTs who have to work at the hospitals during this crisis. Many are mandatory responders. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Irvine Valley, Academic Senate.
Uh, I want to reiterate what I said earlier. Thank you to IVC's leadership for their amazing collaboration for, um, inclusion. I want to thank IVC faculty, uh, students, staff, uh, administration for everything that they're doing. I want to thank the board for supporting us and I look forward to, um, giving you great updates of our amazing accomplishments with online instruction.
Faculty's motivation.
Uh, thank you for holding the meeting and for the opportunity to address the board. It's, it's remarkable how human beings are often at their best in moments of crisis. To be sure, our individual and collective responses to the coronavirus and how it has impacted students and employees' education, employment, and health and safety has inspired the best in us. Administrators, both managerial and academic, have been in constant contact with the CDC and the Orange County Healthcare Agency and have communicated timely factual information concerning protocols and practices to help keep all employees and students as safe as possible. Administrators, at their best, have worked with governing bodies to learn what accommodations and resources exist to support faculty in teaching, counseling, and serving our students so that students can continue to complete their studies with us. Staff, at their best, have remained the first and last line in serving our students, providing them with essential services, all the while supporting faculty and administration with their indispensable work. The staff do yeoman's work. They are the unsung heroes of our college. We should always value them. They deserve our utmost respect. The faculty, at their best, and I appreciate the compliments you have all lauded them with tonight, have done, are doing, and will continue to do everything necessary to educate and serve our students. Working over spring break, adjusting their teaching philosophy and practices, finding innovative and creative ways to provide instruction, learning new things, helping each other, and above all, being flexible and kind to our students. Faculty amaze me with their generosity, their integrity, and their capacity for growth. But it's our students who, at their best, are the best thing about us. They value their education, they care about each other and our world, and even as they express deep anxiety and fears about the moment we're in, and they do. Many are exhausted. They exhibit great grit and courage in continuing to show up to class, to work to support themselves and their families, and to pursue their academic and career goals. When this pandemic passes, and it will, when we return to our normal work lives, our daily grinds, let's all remember ourselves and each other at our best. And let's try to be even better in the normal times than in times of crisis. After all, as someone once said, anyone can be Superman. It's what you do between phone booths that counts. Thank you.
All right. We have.
Very nice.
Irvine Valley College Classified Senate.
Yes, so just want to say thank you for the, uh, the district-wide and college leadership with their communications regarding the COVID-nineteen preparations here at our campus. Uh, thank you to Dr. Visca-Chill for her leadership and support for Classified as we navigate these unprecedented times. Um, the forums were wonderful and, um, very much needed as we, we work through this. Um, Classified Senate, um, will continue to move forward with meetings and, and we're looking forward to finding, um, new online platforms to stay connected. For example, Microsoft Teams is proving to be very valuable already for us to stay connected and to communicate with each other. Our Caring Campus Convocation, that was March twenty-seventh, is now being moved to June twenty-second. And we are working with IABC to receive tips on how to reflect our Caring Campus initiatives in a virtual world.
Thank you, the Classified Senate.
And I don't see either Darian England, um, or Scott Ferguson-Green's name, so I have emailed them to ask them to send me their phone numbers and I don't have anything, so they may not be on the line in order to give a report.
Okay, then, it's, P A usually isn't. So with that, we will return the meeting at eight oh nine.